Don't.
Don't. It's going.
Mayor Mitchell?
Vice Mayor Bravo?
Here.
Councilman Santin?
Here.
Councilman, ahead?
Here.
Councilman Bassman?
Here.
There's a forum present.
Thank you. All rise please if you are able for the invitation. And I have invited our dear pastor, Father Mathias, the pastor of Blessed Trinity Church. I asked him to do the invitation for us tonight. This is a very special month because Blessed Trinity Church is celebrating their 70th year anniversary. And I just want to say that before Father Mathias does the invitation, they started here in Miami Springs under a tent. They were having services under a tent. So, thank you, Father.
Let us pray. Almighty and ever living God, your wisdom, truth, and love. We thank you for allowing us to gather here on this day. We thank you for the many blessings to give us, the liberty which you have bestowed upon us through your providence and by the sacrifices of our forbearers, those who came before us and helped us build this country, state, city, and community. We read in Psalm 127, "Unless the Lord builds the house, the labor in vain will build those built. Unless the Lord guard the city, in vain does the guard keep watch. It is in vain for you to rise early or to put off to rest at night, to eat bread earned by hard toil, all these God gives to his beloved in sleep." Grant us your wisdom, grace, and courage, especially to Mayor Mitchell and the councilmen and women of Miami Springs as they seek to build a strong foundation and serve those entrusted to them. Keep them mindful of your presence in all that they do and guide them by your spirit. We ask that people be open to the gift of peace. We pray for peace in the world, in our country, in our community, and in our own hearts. Bless this meeting and the fellowship in the common good that brings us together at this time. All these we ask in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Father. My splines in the pledge of allegiance and loyalty to the power of the United States of America and to the equal opportunities stands one nation under our individual liberty and justice.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, this weekend we celebrate Veterans Day, but today is the anniversary of the inauguration of the Vietnam War Memorial in Washington, D.C. for 41 years by George Michael Andrew. Those of us who served during that time are very appreciative of that war memorial. If you haven't stopped by, when you're there, get a chance, stop by and see it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Welcome everyone to our November meeting, November 13th City Council meeting. It's nice to see everyone here. Welcome to everyone here and everyone that's joining us virtually. And we will get started with awards and presentations. Oh, before we get started with that, I wanted to ask the council, I'd like to pull item 12C at this time. Can I bring it back at another time, but we're still working on that. Okay, so let's go to awards and presentations. And we have a presentation by our chief, Bustman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Actually, I'd like to call up Lieutenant Frank Perez so we can read the nomination letter for the unit citation award of Miami Springs.
Good evening, members. Over the past five weeks, the Investigations Division of the Detective Bureau and the Crime Suppression Team executed 22 arrests, which included 41 felony charges and 15 misdemeanor charges. Some of the most notable investigations included, on September 29th, 2023, a road rage incident occurred during which the subject swung a machete at the victim's head with full force. As the subject swung the machete, the victim leaned back as far and as fast as he could. Even so, the jetty struck him in the left side of his face. Detective George Pacheco was assigned the case. Before the end of the day, the subject was identified, located, arrested, and Detective Pacheco was able to elicit a full confession. On October 2nd, 2023, Detective Robert Barrios was able to arrest the subject of an aggravated battery that occurred when the subject attacked a model employee and caused serious burns on her right arm and chest before leaving the scene. Detective Barrios was able to convince the subject to surrender himself and provide a full confession. On October 18th, 2023, two subjects stole several packages of meat from a local market and then fled the scene on a stolen motorcycle. Before the end of the day, Detective Pacheco was able to identify, locate, and arrest both subjects as well as recover the stolen motorcycle. Between October 19th and October 25th, CST Officer Fenissette Heremar was able to charge three subjects with human trafficking as well as multiple prostitution and car runs related crimes in reference to two investigations of trafficking occurred at a hotel on Northwest 36th Street. These two investigations also led to the recovery of two adult victims and a one-year-old child of one of the victims. On October 19th, 2023, Miami-Dade Schools PD contacted MSTD in reference to a possible delivery of drugs to a minor at a local park. CST Officer Christopher Carroga was assigned the case. The investigation revealed that 35-year-old male was attempting to exchange vape cartridges for oral sex with an 11-year-old female that attends a local middle school. The subject had spent several days grooming the juvenile and at one point even tried to lure her into his car. The subject was arrested on October 25th when he coordinated a meeting with what he thought was still the 11-year-old to have oral sex. He was charged with multiple sex and narcotics-related felonies. While elements of the MSPD patrol division did provide assistance on some of the investigation, the members of the Detective Bureau and the Crime Suppression Team assisted each other on every one of the investigations that led to the 22 arrests. Each investigator in the division demonstrates an amazing dedication, not just to their investigations, but to each other. This is evident not just in the quality of their work, but also in the great pride with which they accomplish it. The teamwork and professionalism exhibited by the Investigations Division are noteworthy, both in effectiveness and consistency. They are a shining example of what all law enforcement units should strive to be. As such, I respect the request that the entire Investigations Division, both the Detective Bureau and the Crime Suppression Team be considered for unit citation award. On a personal note, I've been a police officer for nearly 20 years and with the city for slightly longer. And I cannot be more proud of this group of men that I work with. I have never worked with a better unit in my entire career.
Today, I received a phone call from Assistant Chief Police Sam Behar. He is the Assistant Chief of Police of North Bay Village. He also happens to be this year's president of Miami-Dade County Association of Chiefs of Police. He called me to inform me, something that I am very proud of, that CST Officer Chris Carroga has been picked as Miami-Dade County Association Chiefs of Police Officer of the Month for the month. Just so you know, Thursday night, there's the award dinner and I'll give you all the details and we'll be there. So, very proud.
Chief, on behalf of all of us here, our residents, the council, we're so grateful to our police department, to every single member of the police department. You keep us safe, you protect our community, you make us the best place to live in all of Florida. Thank you.
Sir. Uh, I want to begin by thanking for the nomination, Chief. I really appreciate it. You know how hard I work. Especially grateful for you and the city. They've done so much for me and it's the reason why I'm here today. I understand that this is a unit citation and I'm grateful for all you guys as well. We all work hard here. This wasn't given this year. But there's other, other parts of the department that I'll help out. This is one big family and that's what makes it this year today. We're allowed to go and conduct these investigations knowing that we've got each other's back here. This isn't a one-person job at the end of the day. So, thank you again. Thank you for everything.
Particularly this month of Thanksgiving, these note that we're very, very grateful for the wonderful police department, the top-notch police department that we have. Thank you, Chief. Okay, we move to the Yard of the Month Award. And is Mr. Bustman here? Sergio Bustman, hello. Mr. Bustman, we want to, and we'll come up here, we want to present you the Yard of the Month Award for the city of Miami Springs. And thank you for making Miami Springs beautiful. And I want to encourage everyone who is out, when you're out and about this month, to be sure to pass by his house, which is at 629 Pine Crest. And just enjoy the beautiful garden that he has. And thank you for making, being part of our community.
Are you there?
No.
Starting here, Miami Springs, we have the City Hall of the Arts Month. This month, it are the members of our Adult Community Center, artists, amazing talent. If you arrive and you get a chance to see the City Hall, it's really impressive. The portraits, they're mainly portraits, right, some landscapes, and those beautiful, so please come up. We want to show you the mansion. And for those of you that are listening virtually, please stop by City Hall this month. And it's beautiful art.
Beautiful art.
Not what the court is. Your preaching and your praise. Of course, we have this certificate. It's presented to the Miami Springs Adult Community Center artists. You're O U, you're all artists. And to Tammy and Nancy and Betty and all the staff at the Adult Community Center. Thank you for all you do. One and that relates to the debate.
Okay, so we're moving to open forum now. And I have two people signed up to speak, but I wanted to ask, Mr. Gonzalez, did you, do you want to speak now at open forum or do you want to speak when we get to the agenda item? No, it would just at the beginning, you speak either now. You likely might want to speak now because by then, who knows, sometimes it runs late. Would you prefer to do that? Okay, and I'll have to speak at the beginning of the agenda item. Then we have Mr. Frank Schoenberger.
Could you hear me? Yes, sir. I am also speaking to the agenda item. The resolution to name a portion of these tribes, Yvonne Schoenberger Way. Hopefully it will pass and the county will prove it. Yvonne Schoenberger, my wife of 50 years, recently passed away. And she has been a resident and activist in the city of Miami Springs for her entire 77 years of life. Even though she arrived here when she was six years old. I recently received a letter from the Florida Department of Health expressing their appreciation for her service as a person in the healthcare profession, as a registered nurse. She worked as a registered nurse. When even when she retired, she worked here in the city of Miami Springs as a parish nurse. She was most interested in the historic of this city to the point that she took all of the material out of Stannix Drugs after the fire. So her and Mary and Taylor could save that material. And then she established a museum on Westwood Drive for quite a few years where she displayed the memorabilia and created posters and other artifacts. We had to shut that down and put it in the storage. She worked on getting another venue. And that is the museum on East Drive. And that is the museum on East Drive that the city donated. At the time, it was a storage facility for lawn equipment. Since we had some experience of renovating property, she worked on that and turned it into a building that was something to be established. And she forced me into buying Louis Curtis' house, number one. Back in the eighties, when interest rates were 18%. People are complaining about them going up now. I hope that you pass on this resolution that will place her name on a building that she has been really hammered over getting up and running. And established a working presentation inside of it on the Miami Springs Battle Creek Sanitarium. That was established by Harvey Kellogg. When he bought the building from our founder. And our founder offered him the building for a dollar, and he said, no, that's too little. I'll give you ten. Thank you.
Yes, I'm sure.
Hey, Council, City Manager. Eric, thank you all. I want to thank you all for your support. I mean, you guys give us 100% support every year, year after year. One of the things that Frank left out is that Yvonne used her own time and her own money a lot of times. Okay, she was really, really fixated on saving our history. That's why we have so much stuff right now. And it just keeps growing and growing. We have two storage units right now. I think by next budget, we're going to need three, because so many people are just dropping things off. And that's all thanks to Ken and his Facebook artwork that he's doing. So hopefully, the county passes this. So I think this is something we need. This is something that came from her. It's not a business for her. She donated her own money, kind. And I think she earned it, basically. Thank you.
Thank you. And we are very appreciative of Yvonne's passion for, and vision. Because it wasn't just passion, it was vision that it was really important to preserve. You know, we call ourselves a historical city. We're so proud that we're going to be celebrating our centennial. And if it hadn't been for Yvonne and a few of her friends, the vision that they had about the importance of preserving the historical artifacts in our city, we would have very little to show for it. So, we're very, very grateful for her hard work. And it's true, as Councilman Petroland does it. She put in not just her time, but her own personal money and Frank's. I know that you donated a lot of money over the years to preserving our history. So thank you for that. Okay, and we have one more speaker, and that is Carlos Lompe.
Good evening, everyone. Carlos Lompe, 181 Hammond Drive, 11 years. We live in Miami Springs, and we're proud of it. I really think that there is no other municipality like Miami Springs. We take care of our old, we take care of our young. We are really family-oriented, extraordinarily so. There is one woman who passed away. 1926, yeah. This is coming up on the centennial, 100 years. She's been here more than half that. She was a risk taker. She opened up a restaurant called The Cozy Corner Diner. It's our greasy spoon here in Miami Springs. I found out the morning after. I was, as I often am, especially lately, having a meal. And I got through that chicken gumbo soup. Then I noticed some flowers coming in next to the Halloween decorations. And that's when I found out. I asked, and I just couldn't have the rest of the meal. But I do want everyone to know that the Cozy Diner be special. It truly is. It just closes too early. Yeah, mine was a chicken gumbo with three vegetables. Collard greens, sweet potato, and cabbage for $8.95. Who does that today? Which devotion into five decades? That's quite an accomplishment. Sometimes we overlook people like her, and we shouldn't. This is all private sector. And her having taken that risk of opening up a restaurant. I really don't think she makes 50 cents on my meal. And we should all be grateful, because there are some months where she didn't take anything home. And yet she provides employment for so many. And it really is an institution. Should you choose to name something after, I can understand it. I can understand, even if you called it The Cozy Corner Place or Cozy Corner Way. But do remember that she was a giver. She was not a taker. Nor was she, unfortunately, in modern times, and here in Miami. We name things after elected politicians who spend public money. I don't understand that. I really don't. Especially when they're still alive. We have school board members naming schools, commissioners naming venues after themselves while they're still alive. File that under Only Miami, and also file Carol M. Coons under Miami Springs. Extraordinary woman. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Carol is an extraordinary woman and will be greatly missed. Everyone that knew her knew that she served, she had her place as a, it was our dining room for Miami Springs. It was where you got together with friends and that everyone in the event caught up. And everyone who knew her said, knew that she had much more to give than just a good meal. It was a heart for her community. She'll be greatly missed. So, thank you, Mr. Lompe, for bringing that. Okay, we're going to move to approval of council minutes. And we have the October 23rd workshop and the October 23rd regular meeting. Is there a second?
Motion six A and B?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santi?
Yes.
Councilman ahead?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell? Yes, the motion carries. Thank you. We move to Agenda Item Nine, Consent Agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent agenda for discussion? I would just like to pull nine E.
Did you say B?
E.
Anything else? Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve nine A, B, C, D, and then F through U.
Later.
Any discussion?
I'm sorry, what's your priority here?
The motion is approved nine A, B, C, D. We're excluding E, because we're pulling it, and then F through U.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santi?
Yes.
Councilman ahead?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell? Yes, the vote carries. Thank you. And for,
Ron, press please.
Yes. For item nine E, I wanted to pull it because I felt that this merits just acknowledgement of the War Memorial, the $150,000 appropriations grant that we're getting from the state. I wanted to publicly thank our state representative Brian Avila, excuse me, our state senator Brian Avila, and our state representative Alex Rizzo, who last year secured the funding for us, $150,000 from the state, so that we build the new War Memorial, and we're very appreciative of that. We're moving forward. It was a beautiful ceremony, on the groundbreaking ceremony. Thanks to Councilman Victor Vasquez, and our former councilman Bob Best, and everyone on the War Memorial Committee. So, I just wanted to make mention of that, of our appreciation to Senator Avila and Representative Rizzo. And with that, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to add something there.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I just want to highlight Senator Avila in the sense that he started pushing for this when he was state representative. And between him and former Senator, yes, sorry, they got it real close. I mean, they got it out of committees and to the governor's desk, but didn't make that round. And so, in that next round, when Representative Avila became senator, he took charge of that again and along with, as you said. Representative Rizzo got it to the finish line, and the governor put his signature on it. And I'm very proud of that, that we're going to move forward with this. And as I mentioned to City Manager, I'm hoping that we can expedite the processes, because we only have one more meeting before the holidays. You got to get the requests out there. Although it's not a major project in terms of view construction, there are some parts of it that are constructed. The six columns representing the military service forces and the refurbishing of the monument itself, which is going to work it on. We figure out, you know, what's going on. The rest of it is laying bricks and laying the gratos for the Gold Star Mothers, I forgot the name of that sadly. So, just hoping we can get it done. Love to see it done for Memorial Day. Memorial monument, one memorial for Memorial Day. Gee, that would be a great thing. So, thank you all. Thank you all for the support.
Thank you, Councilman. And also, Councilman Richard Block from Virginia Gardens has been very, very, Virginia Gardens, our sister city, has been very heavily involved with the effort for this too. So, we're very grateful.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
They had a lot to do with the monies with Avila, that were running on top of them as well, to get the $150,000.
I'm sorry, Councilman.
I said also, they also were very involved with Senator Avila to get the money that we got.
Yes, so we're very,
One-sided.
Yes, so we're very grateful to Councilman Block, and Mayor Dino, and all of the council of Virginia Gardens, of course.
Mayor, I just wanted to thank once again the staff of the city, both under William and J.C. Four, and C. Lass here, for holding the bricks that we have sold, and the second order coming in. There'll probably be a third order, and that's very valuable support that we got. And initially, that we were in, so we could get through the city, some of the things that we hear. So, thank you to the staff, and also for a beautiful veteran state.
Yes, beautiful veteran state. Councilman, are there still bricks available for sale? I know I've been asked that. Okay, so to, for residents who are interested in purchasing bricks for the War Memorial, where do they, is it on our website? Do they reach out to Erica, our?
Yes, yes, yes. No, we have, in fact,
Our city clerk, so just reach out to our city clerks. Wonderful.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a first and a second, a discussion, more discussion. Call the vote, please. Vice Mayor Bravo?
Yes.
Councilman Santi?
Yes.
Councilman ahead?
Yes.
Councilman Vasquez?
Aye.
Mayor Mitchell? Yes, the motion carries. Thank you. Okay, so we move to other business. And it's item 12A, is a request by myself to discuss the tennis center. And so I'll let Mr. Gonzalez, you wanted to speak on this agenda item.
Good evening, Council.
Good evening.
I'm happy to see that the mayor and the rest of the council are going to be discussing the tennis center openly. I thought it was a good chance to reiterate that some of the issues that we've been talking about at the tennis center are not about tenants for pickleball. I just wanted to make sure that there's fair access to the courts, and that the list of who the tennis center serves starts with the citizens and the patrons before profits. I respect the gentlemen that are currently running tennis courts, but I think it's time for a change. We want more hours. We want more time for adult recreational and match play. That means starting open play earlier, so ending the kids' programming earlier, maybe shifting it forward an hour. Holding less private lessons, and preferably moving that kind of program to the back of the courts and getting some updated lighting. This is just some of the basic, no-nouns of the stuff that me and the other tennis center pickleball votes are talking about. There's little chance, I think, for you guys to justify making upgrades over there without having any revenue flowing back to the city. Under the current agreement, it doesn't seem to be happening. So, you know, again, I'm just ready for change, ready for discussion. I want to thank you again for discussing the tennis center. Thank you for the council member that gave me the heads up, happened today. Thank you for the city for replacing the nets that I asked about recently. And as I've said in the past, I'm here, happy to assist, happy to discuss in the preparation of a new award. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, and just what I wanted to bring up for discussion is that, that I think we've all heard from different members of the tennis community and the pickleball community, that they want, would like to see, they have some concerns, and they would like to see some improvements in some of the conditions. I wanted to say that last Monday night, after leaving a meeting here, I went by the tennis center, and they were just full out, pickleball was having a lot of fun. I heard that there was a pickleball tournament on Saturday, and I think over 100 people showed up. So, our tennis center, tennis pickleball racketball club is getting more use than ever, which is wonderful. I think all of us, for me, recreation is a very, very important part of the community, providing a lot of recreational opportunities and good recreational opportunities. So, I just wanted to let the members of our community know that we are aware, your concerns. There is an RFP, I believe, in February is when.
That is correct.
And so, our city manager will be handling that and deciding how he wants to move forward with that. But if you have concerns of, and you voiced several of them, but anything else, let Omar, through our Recreation Department, or our city manager, reach out to them. Let them know what kinds of things you're looking for, so that we can hopefully incorporate in the new contract something that, you know, is, works for everyone. I do want to say, youth recreational opportunities are extremely important to me, and I think to everyone else on this council. And I've heard that, you know, there was concerns because the young kids are having lessons. That's the only way to learn tennis. You know, unless your dad takes you out there and is a player, you really learn lessons, tennis lessons. And so it's extremely important that we provide that to, in our community. Wherever we go with this contract, I want to make sure that those opportunities are there. Lessons are expensive. Tennis, you have to have a pro to do that. And I don't want to see our tennis courts not be handled in a professional manner. We need to have a pro there that runs it, that provides lessons, that provides the opportunities. So, learn to how we do with Little League, and, you know, the basketball tournaments and everything else in the community. And our swim lessons are with, you know, certified instructors and everything. So with that said, I don't know if there's anything else anyone else wants to say, but I wanted to make sure that the residents in our community know that we're looking at the whole situation. Hopefully, I think all of us are interested in building designated pickleball courts in the future, and we're certainly looking at that too.
Actually, I wanted to inform the council, I've been working with Omar on this issue of pickleball, because there's certainly a need and a desire to. But we only have, I believe, two out there right now, temporary courts on one of the tennis courts. That tennis court, there are four tennis courts kind of grouped together, and then the fifth one is off on the side, where they created two temporary courts. We've been monitoring it, and those pickleball courts, they never take those off for tennis things. But they kind of remain pickleball courts. Omar has priced it out, and it falls within my spending authority that there is, we can create in that one tennis court, four pickleball courts. Resurface the entire, the entire court, create four pickleball courts with temporary, and that's nothing permanent, because in the future, if we want to convert it back to a tennis court, we can. With temporary, that's nothing permanent because in the future, if we want to convert it back to a tennis court, we can. You know, very, not great expense. And, and I think this would serve an immediate need. They will double the amount of pickleball courts that we have. And I think it would be greatly appreciated and I wanted to run by you guys because I think we have a temporary solution that'll provide much needed benefit, much needed service to the community and meet some of their demands. So want to let you know that.
Good to know. Good to hear.
I have, I have a question. Instead of us going out for an RFP again, would it be possible if the city can just, if we can have our recreation department handle the tennis courts and maybe we can just RFP for a private lesson or somebody that comes in to provide these youth services given these and times? I mean, I don't know the technicality, but I'll see where, at, at one point, we need to start profiting off of our own tennis courts. And I think by profiting and having our own, just how we have the pool and we have fees for recreational activities that we, that the city gets paid for, I think that we need to start based on the demand. The demand is here. I, I understand that before, maybe it wasn't so, so much traction. But because there's so much movement right now, I think it would be very beneficial for the city to take advantage of, of this opportunity. Because I, I just don't see it. I think our city is at another level where, where I'm very grateful for Manny and the services. But I think we're at a moment in time where we have to maybe look outside the box and bring, bring it back home. There's other cities that do it. So maybe for the youth program, we look into a, an option for that. But I think that we definitely need to bring the tennis courts back home. We need to become, to provide back. We can't provide back to our community.
I just want to mention that years ago, before we contracted, and Manny has been wonderful. And I, and I want to publicly say Manny and his Matchpoint has been, has provided a phenomenal service for our community. I think maybe, Tammy, you might remember how many years ago, three years ago or so, two, three years ago, we had looked at putting out an RFP and we must have had, I can't even remember how many families and parents were here supporting the work that he's done. The tennis that he has instilled in the children and how they've gone on to play tennis in high school, on middle, middle school teams, high school teams, college teams. And we had a great deal of support from the family members. And years ago, before we had Manny take this over, I know we had a wonderful pro, Joel Watts, who was our, he was a full-time employee. So there's a cost with, a significant cost with a full-time employee. You cannot have a tennis court being run by just the recreation department. You have to have a pro. It has to be someone who's capable of really teaching tennis. So, and, and I'm sure J.C. will be looking at that. But I want to say when we had a full-time employee running it, there is a full-time, you know, expenses, benefits and all this. And so this was a much better situation for the city in cost.
Right, and I would, I know, and, and I think that Omar could, we speak to the history of it as well. But it wasn't profitable when we were running it before. I, I think that giving it out to a contract, to a company and making it profitable for the city doesn't have to be mutually exclusive. My understanding was that when we were running it, it was at much greater cost than when Manny and Matt went to get over. It was a labor of love for Manny. My understanding is that he, he was charging us an amount and then he came back a year or two later and said, I don't need that much, charge me less. Like, nobody did that. And, and to your point, I was on the council when, when we, you know, were going for RFP and Manny Fabian, it was a labor of love for him and he was beloved. But I, I believe that, I, I trust that the city staff and Omar, if we do go for an RFP, I think that we should, to the vice mayor's point, you know, get, get into a contract that, that allows some profit for the city. But those things aren't mutually exclusive. It doesn't mean that us taking it over. Because I, I do know that when we were running it, it was at a cost to, to the city rather than a profit.
You're a hundred percent correct. And if you look at the history of it, it, it's just a matter of perspective. Back then, when we had, when we had an in-house and we had our own employee, our own employer, the cost was X. When, I guess they entered into an agreement with Manny, they're like, oh, we'll pay him fifty thousand dollars and he collects all the revenue. We're saving money. You know, it's, it's, we made. Fast forward in twenty years or however long it is, and now we're like, hey, it could be a little better. So it's a matter of fact, it was a great deal back then. Now, if you want to ask the question, oh, it might be, we can make it better. And there's nothing wrong with it. It happens all the time. But it's just, back then, it was a great deal for the city. And that's why, and now we can make it better. And that's the whole point, is always get better.
Good to hear. Yes, I, I just don't understand how private entity could take care of our city assets better than potentially take care of our own city assets.
I can give you an example of.
I mean, I, I understand the examples and I understand the costs, but I think that we definitely, other than RFP, I think we need to compare and contrast where we are today versus where we are before. Because there, there, the demand is different and I appreciate it for Manny. And if he can come up and, and promote some of my ideas, but I think we, we have a, an issue in, in flexibility and accessibility to the tennis courts. And I keep hearing that over and over. So if we can't adapt to these new demands, there, there has to be a change. And maybe, maybe we are in the position now to maybe have, you know, because tennis courts, it's part of the recreation center, right? It's just a, a big umbrella with a lot of things. I have full faith in, in our recreational department. I think that we should just look at it again to, to just really compare features to features, see if we really do, we need to continue to go outside. Or if this is something that we can entertain and perhaps profitability is important. But I think our residents' accessibility and, and kind of providing to the best of our abilities what they're looking for together with the profits is something we, we, I don't think we should be scared to look into because everything costs money, right? So.
But Vice Mayor, I'll, I'll be more than happy to run the analysis for you. That's, that's not a problem.
And that's what we're asking. And, and what I'd like to ask is for the residents who are using, you know, whether you're using pickleball, racquetball, to provide feedback. And I know some of you have to continue to provide that feedback to Omar and to our city manager. So as they look at the process and, and look at, you know, what's, what stands to, to benefit the city the most. And, and I'm sure that our city manager will present to us the options, you know, with what he recommends and what the options are that we have, that we're looking at the whole picture. But again, I want to reiterate, providing sports opportunities for our children, for our youth is paramount to me. Because if they're not there, if they're not at Little League, if they're not at basketball, if they're not at, at tennis. And tennis is a wonderful sport because later on, as you get older, you finally need another person to play. You know, it's not like, you know, some of the other sports that you need a whole team, you can play. So it's, it's a lifelong sport. It really is. So making sure that we always provide that and kids are in school, you know, during the day. So the evening, the afternoons are the times and, and we have to keep in account that even if it's in the afternoon, parents have to be available to pick them up and drop them off. It's not like the days when we could ride our bikes there. So all of these things will be considered.
Good to hear.
Yes, sir.
And I don't necessarily add anything to what's being said. I just appreciate, first of all, I appreciate you bringing it to us. I appreciate you folks being here and, and the city managers. This is a great opportunity. We don't always get these opportunities, right? To have all of us contribute to, to options. And, and as the, the vice mayor has indicated, you know, this is a good time to start looking at these possibilities and come up with that scenario. Like I said, we don't always get these, but this is, when we do, this is, we shouldn't miss the opportunity. The best for all the, all the, for the, the, the kids and, and the adults and, and the sports, the importance of the sport itself. Looking forward to hearing.
Yes, I think we all are. And we're, like the city manager said, we're always looking to approve. So this is a great opportunity to approve. Yes, sir.
I also agree with Councilman Bravo. We definitely got to leave it open. Just to completely say that that's not an option because it didn't quite work last time. I think we still need to consider it. It could be right back to what, you know, most of us, the consensus is thinking is going to happen. But not even try. That's, that doesn't make sense if you want to get better. And then the other thing, I think I was there on Saturday, the tournament. And Sean Brad, Brad did a great job considering the, the number of pickleball courts we had and the hundred and fifty people, I think, where, where they were playing. And he managed to schedule the whole day. So that's, that's testament to the demand to the sport. And I ask, I tell people all the time privately that be patient. I think we're doing a lot in the sense that we are conscious that it is something of demand. When you have to tackle it somehow, that's something we're just going to dust off. And just as our city manager just mentioned, we've already taken steps to like make a decision now to help relieve a little bit. Yeah, future plans are there in the works. We talked about it here publicly before. And those have not, you know, gone away. We're, we're still constantly thinking about that one, but those are just long-term plans. And we are, you know, planning to do that as well. So just, like I said, be patient. We are making those steps and I hope you notice that we are.
Thank you. Okay, so thank you again for the comments, your input. Obviously, that's critical to us making the right decision as to what we're even looking for in the changes. So it's very much appreciated. Okay, we'll move to item twelve B, a request by Councilman Santeen.
Well, as Carlos is so eloquently talking about Carol Ann Coons in the cozy corner. I was fortunate to know her for a while and been very close to her daughters, Joe and Denise and the grandchildren that I coached over the years at West Trinity and our softball leagues here. So I had the opportunity to personally know Carolyn and, and I think that she's definitely a staple to this community. That's an understatement. And, and I really truly believe that she'll have a distinct privilege of, if her name gets agreed by all in the council to put her name on one of the streets, probably one of the ones that most people will come by and see and will know who she is. Because everybody has truly gone through those twenty-eight years at the golden corner and seen all the great things she does, things that people might not know. From her son-in-law and truly that, that she mentioned, you know, things that she would go personally to help. A lot of the, her patrons who could have definitely go there if they were sick and ill. And she did try to make the effort to try to keep the price down, considering the times that we're in. She made a huge effort to make sure that everybody was an affordable place for her, for people to go to. So like I said, I definitely couldn't say more eloquently than Carlos. But the truth is, she's a staple to this community and I hope the council will consider, you know, naming a little park there. So it's one of the golden corners under her name.
Do you need to vote on that?
I think, I think for what we've done traditionally is you've had consensus and we've prepared a resolution that'll be brought back out of, out of future.
Okay. Is there consensus?
I think we all feel very strongly about.
It's Cross Street between Hibiscus and Westwood, which is right.
Right in Brennica's corner.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so we have consensus for that. Thank you, Councilman. So let's move to reports by our city attorney.
And just to clarify, Councilman Santeen's item. For twelve B, you wanted us Carol Coons Way.
Carol A. Carol A. And Coons, depending on the Carol Ann Coons.
Carol and Ian and.
Yeah.
Carol.
Excellent. I have no regrets. I mean, nothing. Okay.
All right, our city manager?
Yes, just a few items here. First, I just wanted to thank staff for a great job at the Veterans Day celebration. It was a tremendous event. And I, I do want to recognize Caitlin and Omar from the Parks and Rec. I wonder Shannon, Lass and Liz and the entire Public Works team. And Tammy Romero for their job well done. It was, it was an incredible event. I love seeing these fans and how, how engaged the community is. So it was, it was great and I look forward to many more. I also wanted to let you all know, some of you may know, I met last week with the Centennial Committee. I am trying to kind of correct neck, Rob, but, you know, help them along so they can, so we can come before you in January is my goal, to present to you a plan, you know, with different events. Something that you guys can take a look at and approve, that we can start working towards that. The website is up. It's not, it's not, well, we're working on the website. We have the template, what it looks like. We're making some tweaks. We presented it to the, to the committee. And, and so they, they had some edits and we're making the, making the edits. Once all the events is, are approved by you all, we're going to fill in the blanks on the, on the website so to show that the events. I'm also working on how to accept donations. It's not just as simple as stroking a check to the city in Miami Springs. There's some legalities that go along with it. Especially, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure it's tax deductible for making it, to make a donation to the city. Not a hundred percent sure about that. But in my speaking, I, I spoke with the city manager of the city of Naples and who, that they're currently going through the, the Centennial Celebration right now for their city. And which I think December third or four, the thing ends. They also, he also indicated that he also did the Centennial Celebration when he was the Assistant City Manager for the town of Palm Beach, Palm Beach County. And gave me a lot of great ideas for thinking to, hey, make sure you have a five-woman C three organization where you can accept donations. So I'm working with our, our, our town attorney on the best way to do that. We have one of my colleagues in Color Bay. He has a foundation through the Miami Foundation where they accept donations through there. And I'm going to be exploring that and I think that one has a lot of promise to it. So anyway, hopefully by January, we'll have some updates for you, I look for you guys to approve regarding this Centennial vote. And that's my report today.
Thank you. Tammy, Assistant City Manager?
On November eighteenth, we have the fourteenth annual Turkey Trot registration is open for this week only at the community center. Also, on November eighteenth, we have our first annual turkey swim, which you can register at the Miami Springs Aquatic Center. November twentieth is the free food drive, food drive distribution from nine AM to twelve PM at the Miami Springs Community Center. It's first come, first served and that's all very well attended every, every time that we offer that. November twentieth is the holiday toy drive. You can drop off any of your unwrapped, I'm sorry, unwrapped toys at the community center starting November twentieth. And then also November twenty-sixth is the tree lighting ceremony at six PM at the Circle Park. And you can have pictures with Santa. Wristbands are required. That's all.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay, so let's start with our vice mayor.
Okay, well, I wanted to say thank you to the police. I'm glad we reached an agreement. Thank you to the officer that got the award today. I have his name here, I'm sorry. But wow, that's, that was intense. That was an intense moment. They are very special people. I'm glad that we were there to get some consensus on Carol Ann Coons Way. And also for Yvonne Shawnberger. I'm sorry for your loss. I, I hope you got my card.
Quite a few.
Good. But you, you, you and your family were my thoughts. So thank you. The Veterans Day was a beautiful day. Councilman Vasquez did an amazing, he was an amazing, I guess, host at sea. So, so, so nice. It was nice to see some community members out there and our, and the city manager. And also Rebecca Sosa was running along with Mayor Mitchell. So that was a nice surprise. Um, let's see here. And I'm super excited because I'm driving around and seeing Public Works put up the Christmas decorations and I'm feeling a little bit giddy already. So his team, I see them out there almost every day putting up some, some Mesa things. And about the tennis court.
about the tennis courts and the pickleball, like we said up here, we're working on it. Um, but you never know. I, I think it's gonna be a temporary solution in the location. There might be a future for that. So we'll keep you posted. And, um, I think that's it. Thank you for a good meeting and I'll see you next time.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilman Bass quiz this time on that end.
And I was gonna be last. Okay, that's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Thank you very much. I, I had a, I had a wonderful Veterans Day. I mean, I've, I've attended every Veterans Day event that we've had since I moved here, uh, a dozen years ago. Um, I, I enjoyed being the MC. It, uh, was a little rattling because at one point right before we began, the Boy Scouts came up to me and said, uh, where are the flags? And I'm like, what? But Caitlin had that all taken care of as well and she was prepared. So anyway, um, and, uh, and it was great to see all of you there and see, uh, some of our colleagues from Virginia Gardens. City council members and so forth there as well. Uh, and, and, and it was a delightful surprise to see, uh, Commissioner Sosa there. So thank you, Mayor, for taking care of that. Um, and then in the evening, uh, the Lions Club of Miami Springs, um, had a dinner, which they always do on the, uh, Veterans Evening Day. And it was just, which is wonderful to, to, uh, to be there and enjoy that camaraderie, um, from one of our, one of our many exceptional uh, civic organizations, um, in the city. Um, also, um, I was informed, I was supposed to attend the pickleball uh, tournament. I said it was gonna be a little tight for me because our, our event started at nine. But, uh, but Richard Block from the War Memorial Committee was able to attend. And, um, I understand that the, uh, pickleball tournament, uh, made a contribution of twenty-eight hundred dollars to the War Memorial. So, uh, we're really happy about that. And, uh, and, and so, um, thank you, thank you all the organizers for that. Um, yesterday I attended an event at the, uh, Rebecca Sosa Theater. Um, it's, it's an event that, uh, was celebrated, uh, November nineteenth is known uh, in the island of Puerto Rico. That's Puerto Rico Day. Uh, that's the chronicles of, in the ship's manifest of Christopher Columbus' second trip on November nineteenth, fourteen ninety-three. He landed on the island. So it's some contribution about that date, but it's still an important date. And, uh, uh, I'm a member of an organization called the, uh, the Center for Puerto, uh, Puerto Rico's Cultural Center of South Florida, which is, uh, a, a member of the Institute of Puerto Rico that was founded in nineteen fifty-five. And these are one of the things that they do. They organize a troubadour, um, exchange. And, and for those who don't know what troubadours are, it's the original freestyle, right, of improvising music. And, uh, we had the, a Cuban troubadour and a Puerto Rican troubadour. And it, the red center of, at the theater was full. Um, the organizers and, and we started, no, I, I just helped pick the connections, but Ralph Wakefield, they started organizing when he was here. And with Tammy's assistant, she was, she was running the city. We were able to help them make all the connections and, and raise the money to do the events. Uh, Sam and, and the folks at the, at the theater were delighted. They didn't understand a word, but the music was beautiful. Um, and we got a lot of, uh, a, a lot of kudos from the people who attended and I gave a welcome on behalf of the city to the folks who attended. In fact, I was told this morning that, uh, they're looking to get on the calendar for next year. So, uh, um, well done there. Um, and, um, I just wanna say, uh, I wanna wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Um, you know, be thankful for the bounties that we receive. And, 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 and hope and pray and help and assist to make it a bountiful Thanksgiving for those who don't have.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Bad?
Yep, uh, I think it was a productive meeting. We got, we got a lot of things done. Uh, kind of looking forward to, um, us continuing as a body to, uh, to move things forward in the city and, uh, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Santeen?
I also wanna start with the, uh, police department. Um, I think after listening to the, uh, list of stuff that they do, uh, we're very proud that they are part of our community. Um, and also to Miss Schonberger's, uh, agreement to get from the council to have her name recognized by this community. Very proud. I've had a couple of opportunities over the years to meet her. She's a super kind person, to say the least. And I think it's only deserving. I'm glad, uh, we got the consensus there. Um, for his veterans', uh, ceremony, ribbon cutting is another, uh, point how this community is, uh, so special. Um, if you were there, you'll feel it and you know it. Um, and I just wanted to come back to give you a little bit more of, uh, what information is gonna, is gonna hear on the paper. But we're gonna start, uh, doing the other two blocks of Westwood Drive, same thing we did last year with the Christmas trees. The Rotary, Lions Club, Optimist Club, and also the Women's Club have given all five hundred dollars each. This year, we're gonna need a couple more extra trees. Laz, uh, told me before that, uh, that those two blocks are a lot longer. So we're gonna keep with the, uh, the intentions of, uh, making a little town, uh, winterland. And, uh, everybody appreciates it. When you get that field, walk into a town, it's all light up. So that's in the works. Hopefully we'll get it done. I know we gotta do a couple of things before that, but everything's in, in, in motion. And then last thing, I just got back last week and you've probably heard some stuff out there that's from Hammond's Ford, New York. I was able to visit, uh, uh, Glenn Curtis Museum and spend time with the curators there. Former one, Rick Leidenber- Leidenbrink, and, uh, Everett Don, she's the current one. And they were just delighted to hear, uh, that we're gonna celebrate, uh, our centennial and do our best to, um, to highlight our founding father. And they're gonna do everything they can. You can consider them a sister city. They're gonna do everything and giving access to whatever artifacts that they can without destroying their current exhibit. Uh, they had a lot of stuff that are obviously original stuff, but anything they have in storage, any permissions to any of their lighting images. Like I said, they, they're just ecstatic that we're gonna do it. It's a win-win for both communities. Uh, and they're gonna do their best to play a part of it. And, uh, well, last thing, wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, thank you, Councilman Santeen, for taking the trip there and, and making that connection through the Glenn Curtis, uh, museum. That's phenomenal. Um, I just wanted to, um, it's Thanksgiving November and, um, Thanksgiving is coming up. So, um, I wanted to, uh, thank our city, um, the employees in our city. And I'm actually going to say the names of all the departments because I, you know, we're just so blessed that things work the way they do. And it has so much to do with, sometimes we get all the credit and we get the criticism too, but we get a lot of credit for stuff. And, and it's really the employees in our city that are holding everything together, doing the work, um, regardless of what we want extra and all this. They're, you know, they know what needs to be done. So I wanted to, um, thank our police department, our public works. I know Laz is back there, Laz and Liz and all of your staff, um, our building department, finance department, recreation department, the golf course, um, our IT department. Um, our, uh, city clerk, Erica, and her, all of her staff, human resources, Phil Collins and his staff for procurement. Our administration, our city manager, our assistant city manager, um, you do wonders all the time. Our very own Mikey.
He's in the department once.
Yes. Yes. And our, you know, and, and there's so many people, um, that support the city that are a critical part of it. Of course, our city attorney, um, Heidi and Roger and all of your staff and our planners and our engineers and architects, you know, um, all of them are. And, and there is every name that I've said of a department, there's people behind it, um, that, that make it work. So we're very appreciative of that. And, um, lastly, the council, each of you greatly appreciative of the opportunity to work with each of you. Um, this was a really hard summer and fall. We had a lot of meetings. Public behind-the-scenes work, you know, is just, um, ongoing, a lot going on. So it's kind of nice right now that, um, we got these consent agenda items approved and we're moving forward. Um, and I think we all deserve a good break right now for Thanksgiving. So, um, God bless everyone and God bless Miami Springs. Seeing as it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Happy Thanksgiving.